Okay.
Okay, I think you're good to go.
Yeah. Awesome. Okay, welcome everyone to the Moser Community School Board of Directors meeting. It is October 21st, 2025. Let's first start with a round of introductions, please.
Director Lawson.
My name is Ellen Australian.
Jen Langley.
Jennifer Strand.
Hannah McKee.
Maru.
Julie.
Michelle Vakken.
Shannon By.
You. Um, and changes and approval of the agenda.
Like a motion to accept that?
Oh wait, I, I, we do have one. Yeah, so we need to just change on number nine, do D O E project update. The action, the potential action item is not for thirty eight thousand, it's for twenty nine, twenty nine thousand four hundred and sixty-two. And the company is installed building products. That's just new information, so we'll add, thought we'd add that at that point. And then another change is to add number six, move number six up because we're gonna have our M T A gal join us soon if they haven't already. Um, so we'll move up to shortly after, well, just up to number five, I guess. One up. So that they can go home and go have dinner. Any other changes you want to make?
Well, we need to fit about the reservation.
We got it. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I think the motion that we accept the agenda with changes as others.
Second, Tiffany, all in favor? Any opposed? Jules, where are you on that one?
No opposition. Okay, great. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm gonna stop sharing screen. Sure. And then, um, let's see, we do have one pre-submitted public comment and it is in the form of a letter from an Ozbord Board of Director candidate. This is from Paul Zastro out of Hood River, and he asked that I share this information with you all. Um, it's regarding the Oregon School Board Association's elections for Board of Directors. Um, and Paul is applying to be a Board of Director, and so I'll just pass this around.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Just looking for a vote.
He's just looking to get his information out. Yeah.
Michelle, I think I've received an email from him as well.
Oh. Great. Yeah. Um, and that is all that I had as far as pre-submitted public comments. And then we started the meeting at five, we went into executive session for O R S one nine two six six two I and one nine two six six oh eight. We'll follow up from that session.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that the board agrees to accept the resignation letter of Rosemary Lancy effective on September twenty first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, second from Tiffany, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Um, let's see, folks, could everyone have a chance to look at both the September sixteenth? Oh yeah, M T A reports. Changed it, but it wasn't on my list. Great. Ms. Baker and Lisa, are you there? Shannon and Lisa? Okay, so let's get those minutes approved. So we have September sixteenth and the thirtieth. Any changes? Did you have a change? Go on.
I did. I just noticed on September thirtieth that Dan Lawson was not listed in the ten days.
I wrote myself.
We're thinking you were there. Oh, great. Okay, so we'll add Dan to the minutes on the thirtieth. Anything else that needs to be added or amended on those two sets of notes?
Make a motion to accept the, approve the minutes as changes of it.
For the sixteen and the thirtieth? Great, second. Thank you, Hannah. Seconds, all those in favor? Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Hi, hi, Shannon and Lisa. Thank you for joining us later than normal. We are ready and ready to listen to the, to your report. On the air up?
Okay. Um, so our board report from our staff members is as follows. We have our reading room, which small groups are off and running. Lesson plans are helping us all to streamline our short time with students. They have been working hard and excited to come with us. We began our first round of progress monitoring Monday, the twentieth, using the past tool from our letters course and the Dibbles Progress Monitoring Tools results to follow.
Okay, and then primary classes. Primary students are exploring geometry and learning about the attributes of different shapes. I was in there pushing in and they were making some spheres this week. Were, they are finishing up their illustration unit in writing. In science and social studies, they are exploring different habitats found on each of the continents. Will be taking a closer look at local animal and habitat with a visit to the Discovery Center grounds in early November. They have designed a special activity to match our in-class learning and are bringing in local scientists to help our students connect their classroom learning to jobs and needs in our local communities.
Second and third grade are learning about forces in science and we're enjoying exploring different types along with the outcomes of applying forces. We have done several experiments and explorations around it. We continue to read a variety of genres and are constantly using our schema to help us become stronger readers. We've also been discussing the mental images that we form as we read and are beginning to annotate information as we read to capture the important details. We continue to write narratives and are collecting interesting words to add to our writing. Second grade math is doing addition and subtraction with word problems. And third grade math has just completed a unit on graphs and will begin multiplication.
Okay, and fifth grade, our past several weeks, um, we have continued to grow as learners and community members. In reading and writing, we've been focusing on character development and forming strong opinions through both fiction and non-fiction texts. In science, students recently wrapped up a unit on animal adaptations and survival. As we begin exploring rock formations, fossils, and how Earth's surface changes over time, we're also preparing for an upcoming field trip to the zoo, which I think is tomorrow. Maybe not. This trip will give students the opportunity to make connections between their classroom learning and real-world examples of animal behavior and adaptation. We're proud of the curiosity, collaboration, and effort students um, continue to bring to their learning. We're all excited for what's still to come in the fall.
This next message is from, uh, Sor said from six, eight, Science, Social Studies and Creations. Board members, thank you for entrusting me with your children and their learning. It's been an absolute joy serving the Moser Middle School community this year. We've been diving into everything from ecosystems to world religions and abstract collage art. In science, we're kicking off a new unit on human impact and sustainability. In social studies, we'll build on our world religions unit with two upcoming field trips. As artists, we're exploring watercolor and drawing inspiration from the beauty of the season and our surrounding. As always, please reach out with any questions, celebrations, or concerns. Our village is stronger than we, when we stay connected. Cheers to a world where there are Octobers.
Okay, greetings from the music room. We've taken the ukuleles off the wall and put them into the hands of our aspiring musicians. Students are very excited to pick up where we left off last year, singing, playing, and adding more useful tools to our musical tool belts. We're currently taking our understanding of rhythm and applying it to the ukulele, reviewing and rediscovering chord structure, as well as exploring melodies as we play together, being highlighted together. Lately, their cohesiveness has been very noticeable and inspiring, paving the way for fun and success. The progress of our Moser Middle School Music Squad has been awesome to experience this first trimester. Students have shown focus, dedication, and a true desire to improve as we tackle a very popular instrument, the piano. We're gaining basic knowledge of how the piano works along with reading notation and exploring scales up and down the keyboard. We're all very excited for our new music room. Students are eager to have more space to spread their musical wings and create more sounds and vibrations. Thank you all for your support in this endeavor. I realize that this is a huge undertaking and I feel honored to be part of creating and cultivating this dedicated space. Thank you for your trust and support always, Nathan Strands.
And then as a whole, the M T A met with our executive director for the first monthly meeting to discuss M T A concerns and questions. And that's our report.
Hey, thank you. Any, any questions or follow-up from the board?
I'm just wondering, Lisa, I had sent an email and I didn't get any responses. Does it seem like all the teachers are supported well enough for, you know, classroom help?
Well, um, I talked with them and then Michelle, uh, had a different take on that one, I think, with getting volunteers into the rooms to do.
I, I, I have no problem with it. I just said that I think sometimes it's easier for teachers to get their own because having someone be a middle person is often hard and so, but.
Yeah, and that's what I mentioned in the email too, like if there was, then that's fine, but. Anyway, I just wanted to connect volunteers to teachers if they need them.
I, I, I think so. Um, I think one of the concerns that some of the teachers were having, uh, was having volunteers come in and then, like, is there somebody that could help, like, train them a little bit in terms of how to come into a classroom and I don't know, they feel like it's just an extra step sometimes that it's hard.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can work on that, but it, again, I think that's hard because every teacher has, you know, a different use for their volunteers, and so I think that would be more on a case-to-case basis, so.
So yeah, that's just kind of the feedback that I've had from them. So I, I, I think we might have to sit down and put our heads together a little bit more about it.
We could talk about it as a November. And I think the point is just to, if folks need support and want support, want help, then we're here to help. Yeah.
I mean, speaking from a personal experience, I had a volunteer who's coming on Thursdays and I love having her there, but like her first day, I had no time to get her situated or really kind of let her know what was going on. It was just kind of hit the ground running and so it, and I felt badly because it's kind of like I felt scrambled in a way. Um, so it's, I think that's kind of hard, is to have the time and to get our volunteers situated before they step into the room.
Yeah, I, I hear you. Again, I think that's really hard because every teaching, every class, like what happens in your classroom is gonna be different than what happens in Fern's class or what's happened. So I think that that's kind of tough to do and just in my experience, like, I wish, I mean, I welcomed a lot of volunteers. I mean, I think once you learn how, like, and again, it is probably a little bit of a training process for them. So, but.
I wonder if there could be some kind of matching program where it's like, I would love a volunteer, you know, uh, daily from eleven thirty to twelve thirty because that's when I teach math and I have a lot of kids. And then, like, we have a volunteer who could, could do that every Monday and Wednesday. Um, and then we, we match those two and you have a conversation about whether you wanna meet beforehand before the first instance of doing that, um, and just have a, even like a half an hour conversation about like, what would be really helpful is I have these four students who are really at a different place and it's either ahead or behind. If you could work with those four or whatever it is.
That is the info I reached out for to find out, like, to just know first off, because then to try to match it with like the Dan, at least at first. If, if they would tell me what they needed, then I was gonna try to find the people, but it sounds like they're a little hesitant because of like training and stuff, but that is something we can work out.
I, I think, I think we could work on it because I think they're very, like, would love the extra help. I mean, we're not denying that at all.
But you didn't get it. No. But nobody responded.
Well, maybe, maybe it's just another, maybe it's a conversation.
Yeah. Cause it's another app for them.
Yeah.
Well, and I mean, I know from supervising interns that sometimes it's more work than it is help. So it, you know, it's like finding the right volunteer and the right way to make it work. Uh, so certainly it's not, it's not the same as being able to hire your own P A that's in your classroom and that you build a relationship with and that knows all the kids and that, that's a whole other level, but um, if there's some, you know, something specific that people could help with.
Yeah.
I, I do know that one very specific thing that a lot of us are struggling with is the Tuesday folders. So, I mean, getting the information into the kids' folders and out and ready before they go home. I, I know a lot of teachers would love help with that.
Well, that is, yeah, I can easily take it.
So, but maybe each teacher, if they had expectations or like were able to identify concerns that didn't require a ton of training, like, hey, here's a Tuesday folder. Here's a pile of information that needs to go into each folder, or make sure there, when those Tuesday folders come in, you get all their homework out of the folders and turn it in wherever it needs to go, those kinds of things, like, I, I'd be happy to volunteer on those things, but I don't. But I, I hear what Shell's saying, like, every class is probably different, but if each teacher wanted volunteers, then maybe they could make a document. Their time to assess, here's my expectations. Like, here's what I need help with in my class. So anybody who volunteers to come in can see that prior to the volunteering and you can just say, hey, you're gonna get a volunteer this day. Here's where these things are, the expectations talked about, and then that way you don't have to spend a ton of time training them. You just cover some of this, the, the small things that make your day easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say that having volunteered, um, it was in the first grade class, um, just going in and reading with kids. There were times when a child would share something with me that I thought, okay, you know, what do I, what do I do with this? And, you know, how do I best address, you know, what has been shared? And so I, I do think that it, it is an important conversation. And I think maybe zeroing in or doing the same on some of these tasks that, you know, don't require a lot of training where, you know, maybe even, um, if, if folks are going to be going into the classroom, you know, having some orientation where there's, and can remember this information, um, because uh, it, it is, it's, it's a place of honor. Um, and, and it's, it it can be very impactful in many different ways for the children, so it won't uh, remind them who, who, you know, who's interacting and how.
And also letting parents know what they, you know, what what you think. To that, to that point, we're doing, um, since you were bringing up reading, we're doing that smart reading program. And we have an orientation scheduled on November fifth with all the volunteers, and so people do want to get involved with that. Um, I am happy to, I mean, we can send out another email down to the set of email blasts to everybody so that they can get on that volunteer and then get that training specifically for the reading.
That's great. Julie has something.
I was gonna say, I also wonder if there are other tasks within the school, and I don't have this kind of big picture eye that would, are more appropriate for volunteers that would free up someone that really knows the kids, like can work with the teacher better. So like, there are certain people who, it seems like sometimes float and, um, through different positions, like are out at recess and they're out and helping in the lunchroom and then they're helping one-on-one with kids, like, you know, if there's something helping, helping in the lunchroom or helping at least this or helping in some other capacity inside the school that then frees up a person who may be more helpful in the classroom because they interact with students every day and know kind of what the discipline expectations are. So just, just thinking about that, it's like, where do we put our volunteers? Could they be, could they be freeing up a body, a person who is, maybe were, um, appropriate and skilled to be working in the way Marie's suggesting with students because they know them already and they're, know the teachers and they know the drill, kind of.
Okay, Dan?
Uh, the other day when you sent out the request for just help in the lunchroom was, you know, like, I think that would be something where if people sign up as volunteers, you could also just include that whole list, like, hey, read this, and then that doesn't draw on her.
Yeah, and, and, well, I would say that that would just be extra help in there because I would never, um, don't take this wrong, volunteers, but it's really hard to rely on a volunteer to show up to serve in the cafeteria or something like that. That, that, it, um, we used to try to do that, we'd like have extra people at recess and, and so a superintendent's like, well, we'll just have volunteers at recess. I'm like, great, until they don't show up, you know, and people have really busy lives. And so to me, like, I would love extra eyes out on the recess. Jen would love extra eyes out of recess. Um, and in the cafeteria, like, it's super helpful when you guys, you know, come into the cafeteria and help out too, because that is our busiest places, you know, that's the place that, and it's also kind of the easiest place to help is, you know, you know how to make them go take their tray over, make sure they've got enough vegetables on their tray, so.
And if we have any volunteers for recess, I'd be happy to sit down with them and tell them.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have, I mean, I can do a blast on it because it, it has been on quite a bit. I, it is surprising to me the lack of volunteers because I come from a, a place that we had, you know, but also things like in this, you know, in my previous school, because the teachers recruited a lot of their parents to come to their classrooms, so. Um, and I think that the volunteers usually want to be wherever their child is a lot of times too, so that is a motivation, so. Okay, that, that's what, yeah.
Well, let's be thinking and talking on this one.
Yeah.
Um, anything else for the M T A gals? Well, let's be thinking and talking on this one.
Yeah.
Um, anything else for the M T A gals? Okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Um, okay, business manager and pressures report. We do not have a bill yet, but.
Oh, we got Shannon.
Do you want me to read the paperwork? Okay. All right, business manager updates for ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Recently completed financial projects, the twenty-three, twenty-four audits completed and included in your board packet for review. That is very exciting.
It is.
Um, the fresh fruits and vegetables program grant for twenty-four, twenty-five was completed and all funds have been obtained. Um, open financial projects, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five audit is underway and making progress. When asked for backup invoices and documentation, for the first time, we were able to find all documents in our electronic system to save hours of having to go through manual files and was great progress for our school.
Great.
D O E invoicing, um, second invoice has been reviewed and corrections were requested. Um, as far as the nine twenty or nine ninety, um, for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, they are waiting, one of our, Elliot is waiting for financials to be composed by Abram to finalize the nine ninety, so it's all worth waiting for all of those. Um, the Department of Energy grant status, all contractors are in the L C P time tracking program and reports are reviewed weekly. Um, second invoice being revised. List of funds spent so far are in the financial packet. Um, no invoices are currently open in our E P system. Um, applied for a no cost time extension with D O E for one year. The current deadline was, um, September thirtieth and proposed extension is for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So we're still waiting for the approval on, on the one-year extension. Um, reports for the third quarter are currently being reviewed and submitted. All right, this year's current fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Budget highlights, we have come up with an agreement proposal for the overall payment of employee will be submitted for approval. We have done that. Uh, payroll has been fully transferred to Shannon. There have been, um, other construction projects, not D O E related, that have been completed. Um, for example, the flooring, concrete, concrete, et cetera. These transactions are highlighted in a capital projects transactions report to show the impact, um, the L G I P fund balances. Uh, two recommendations came up in the management letter that new processes have been created to correct moving forward. So one of the, yeah. One in regards to statement review and the other is into journal entry review. Um, it is helpful to have that feedback as we continue to customize the financial policies and procedures for Moser. Those items will be included in the board financial, um, as well, and we have made, um, the, we have made those.
Having Shannon here is kind of help, is not kind of help. So, um, when the vacant nicks come in, we always stamp them when we brought them. I look at them. Shannon looks at them and now Veronica looks at them, so there's at least, you know, recess of eyes on them and so, and then she's also added them to the, our financial drive, all the reconciliations are on there because that was a big issue with the audit was things were not reconciled on time or they couldn't find them, so that's.
So we, yeah, and so I will be also be reviewing all of the bank reconciliations after Veronica completes them as well as reviewing all the journal entries that she does as well. So we have a double approval.
And they don't like credit books.
And they don't like.
Can I ask a question on that? Have you all been like creating a paper, you know, these new processes?
We are in the process of making a, um, procedural internal control. Cause they're the currently one. Right, and I haven't written them in the past, so I feel like it's super easy. Okay. Um, the budget is on track for what was anticipated so far this year. We will continue to monitor at a more detailed level with the executive director and that is all our business manager notes.
Yeah, we're, like, she was pretty happy that we're at thirty percent for payroll and that's what we're third way through the year, so.
We're closer to twenty-nine percent, but yeah.
But that's with, you know, like, the project that we have, that's why she's keeping track of them, um, for the L G I P because those are coming out of the double funds, but, but they're also, um, like, the new roof was necessary. Like, we, we were not trying to do anything that's having related to it, so.
Any comments or questions about business manager report?
And I was a little confused. Um, October is not in there. It's just that she's putting a, she's just putting up placeholders so that when we have things that we talk about, she's putting them in the, in the, uh, visit, the, the notes, so she doesn't have to like think about what, everything that we said the last month.
Yeah.
So you got lots of reports in there.
Yeah, I appreciate, I took a peek in there. It was very easy.
What other questions would folks, would have on all of this?
How is the federal shutdown impacting our D O E stuff? Are we able to communicate with both?
We are. Christian's still, like, I just got an email from them, so, yeah. Yeah, so it was kind of funny because I said, oh, you guys are there. And he said, yeah, we must be essential, so. Um, they are still there. They, um, but I'm gonna say it is slowing things down. Um, one of the things is our, um, the extension that he said has to go all the way up to the Secretary of Department of Energy. So, yeah, so he said it takes a long time to get up there. Um, his suggestion is, um, anything that we spend after the thirtieth is at our risk. So that's why we're just kind of, kind of finishing up stuff and then we'll have to make that decision if we do not get the extension.
And would you, would you have that on the agenda for later?
Okay. So, um, I, I mean, there's still work. I mean, everything is going on. It's all working.
Okay.
Good. So the thirtieth of last month.
Yeah, and we had actually done it like at the beginning of September. It just, it takes a while. So, and our reasoning was because we didn't have any education for four months when they were trying to figure it out, so.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, if you want to give us your report?
Sure. Sure, um, so I did want to. One of the things that we need to always kind of keep in our forefront is our strategic plan. Which we haven't been uh, very good about, but we are we 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 kind of finished strong with it last year and now we need to kind of uh, go back and. Kind of remembering our our goals that we have and just kind of reminding people that. That we are uh, our goal is to design a comprehensive school curriculum that emphasizes critical thinking skills, the creative arts and outdoor place learning. Um, we are currently um, working on some of that with our educational excellence of. Uh, people that we have um, been using grant money for, we've been working with the teachers. Increase reading, math and science achievement engagement across all grade levels. Create a school culture where everybody feels a sense of voice, a love of learning and a sense of belonging, a feeling of safety. Um, the good news that's really helping is I mean we have wonderful teachers, we also have um, Lisa Stevenson as our um. Uh, school counselor and she's getting to go into classrooms and do SCL lessons which is. I was giving a tour today and we happened to walk into Ms. Johnson's classroom and they were basically all like. Practicing breathing and the teacher is like, this is amazing. Yes, to have all the K ones so calm like. Anyway, maintain strong financial health by developing implementing effective operational policies and procedures and we I think we're making progress on that. Bringing Shannon on to helping develop them a long range facility campus plan that prioritizes human and environmental health. That seems to be ongoing and be to have a community engagement connection of like learning so um, we are having a. Follow up meeting with Bill Noonan and it was supposed to be a Thursday, but we might be. I think we're gonna live it, I don't think we're ready, we're not ready, we're gonna we're gonna move it out a couple weeks, it kind of snuck up on us. So we're we're gonna go back now, so just kind of keeping that in mind, um, we're at a hundred and ninety students still, nine pre-K. Um, that really hasn't changed a whole lot, we have about five people on the waitlist, um, that we've made a decision that. It feels full, we feel full here and so adding students at this point would be unless somebody left would be pretty disruptive. So we're like we're we're feeling pretty good with what we have. And what does that? Result in as far as like class sizes, our class size is about twenty four kids, so I put that on that ED report so K ones both at eighteen. Two, three are both at twenty two, four, five are at twenty three, twenty four and middle school is at twenty one, twenty one, twenty one.
Like a number twenty one.
Yeah. And I think that all they all seems like that feeling pretty good. Um, we just did our first round of map testing and um, then Kathy, Jenna, Margie, Jen and I. We sat down and went through the results and it was kind of nice we could go by grade level, we looked at reading, we looked at math. Um, kids that are in like red, we wanted to make sure they were either currently being served by an IP or being served by intervention. And that was the case for most of them, we had a couple of kids that. Were necessarily, um, there's some kids that can kind of fly underneath the radar if you're not careful and so we did make some phone calls on them. Um, and then we also listened to kids at the top of the list, you know, the kids that are blue. Um, that are scoring in the nineties and the ninety percentile and how are we what are we gonna do for the place to help challenge them, help move them along? So it was it was a pretty good, was a nice discussion, it's really just reading and um, we I didn't really look at the science scores which we do have. But we're just kind of focusing on reading math. Uh, we did have our educational excellence uh, people here last week and so they each team had a half day. Uh, to do project mapping, um, unit mapping and so we had two subs on Monday and they were in the K one. So that that team got to meet, actually I think the two, three in the morning and then the K ones got in the afternoon and about two and a half hours which is about. I think it I was just talking to Lisa Goddard like trying to do that all day is kind of mind numbing, so two and a half hours seemed about right, so everybody was kind of ready to take a break. It is a little harder trying to get the um, the four, five is easy, it's a little harder try try get the um, middle school. Because it's three teachers and it's just it was a little bit harder, but we were able to do it, I had to bring in a sub from Corbett. But there there's no subs out there right now and so she came in and then we had somebody else Kathy Mann helped out, Jen helped out. And to get them that time to do that, so they might be the team that we have to probably pay for some after hour. Type, it's just really hard to get them that time off. Anyway, um, and on November sixth Andrea and Missy will be back here and they're going to go into teachers' classrooms and either observe them teach. Or teach a lesson for them or model a lesson and then after that they're gonna meet with each teacher to reflect on the lesson. And she said it's very much um, I know like a confessional, so and she's the priest. And so we don't get to know what they talk about, that's just between her or Andrea and Missy and the teacher. And it could be teachers reaching out saying, um, I really noticed that I need some help on this and we kind of like watch for that. Or I'm really struggling with that, can you show me how to teach that lesson and then they get turned to a reflection on that, so I'm pretty excited about that. And then they have we have we have them all scheduled out for the whole entire year, so they do and then they'll come back and they'll do a they do it, they start out, they do a strategy. They show a couple of different strategies and I love that they did that and Amber came back and she's already shipped like she had taken it, it was one of the she. They're very good about giving you something that you can go take into your classroom and use immediately, so. We did talk about just um, our standards in um. Standard base and our curriculum and just getting that aligned and so we have a lot to like, we have a lot of work to do. Financial, we've already talked about all that, we got it, we're so excited that the twenty three, twenty four audit is finished. Um, job postings, so I do have a recommendation to hire. And she's really just been working, but I don't think we were able when we actually because of the job posting, this is actually the first time that we actually get to vote on. For being hired, um, and we're right now at five and a half hours per day. The hope is that if we actually get that bump from going from one sixty seven to one ninety if we get. Actually, I asked for one eighty, if we do get a bump in our uh, state school fund is that we give her a few more hours because. There is a big increase from we went from a hundred lunches a day to anywhere from a hundred. So it has increased a lot of the, um, it was really nice that she is trained in the cafeteria because. Uh, Richard was off on that day and she was able to slip, you know, and turn on Rock doing lunch, so that's very nice to have that happen. Um, and then a music room, we have the building permit, so we're super excited about that, Dawn was um. You don't miss the dawn, she's gonna just get on you and on you and on you until you finally give her a building permit, so she did that. Uh, the rough electrical is completed, um, the insulation is on there, the new roof is on there, the new roof actually had a lot of insulation. In it and so we're actually gonna come out with more than the required insulation in that building, so we're excited about that. Um, we have a coat of paint that's been done on the inside, uh, and then the insulation is actually in. And I believe there's an inspection tomorrow and then once they get that, there's already sheet rock in there and they can start sheet rockery. So it's gonna it's going fairly.
Maybe next month at forty.
Well, he can still have a tour. The forty week committee met on October eighth, we had a pretty good turnout, I was I was like it was pleasantly surprised, um, we um, we're taking notes. You guys I think will have access to the notes of that, um, uh, we're our next work, our next meeting is gonna be next week, October thirtieth at two thirty. We're trying to keep them to an hour, um, just so we can and I think the agenda will be to kind of split into groups and give people. Jocks to do. Transportation, we're gonna talk about that a little bit later too and then I just put all the different things that we have, we have a lot of people taking field trips. The middle school is gone tomorrow all day, they're actually all day and a little bit more, they're gonna be returning late. Um, we have uh, conferences, I would also say, I want to say that on last Friday, we had fall conferences, it was busy in here. But was really cool, they did an arena style for the middle school and so parents could come and go if they please and you had how many people Jen?
Twenty.
Forty uh, twenty seven, twenty seven at a sixty three and I'm gonna say that that's not bad. And they have a hard time getting those middle school parents to come in and it was really nice because they could go around and talk to all three teachers. Sometimes you'd see them go to each teacher and sometimes you'd see all three teachers coming to one parent. Anyway, so they're gonna you're gonna continue the same same style.
We're gonna do it again and we did miss, I made some phone calls. Parents who generally don't come into the conferences.
Yeah.
So you can and I'm hoping we'll get some of the parents who don't.
And we have another busy day, this Friday for parents to come in, they're beginning channel coming in next week. The K ones are going to the Discovery Center and then everybody's going to the zoo but not on the same day, so K ones are going to the four, five. Very busy and then we have skate night.
It's actually Friday.
Friday. There's blood there and then they changed it and I keep finding things I haven't changed it on, so yeah, it's Friday. That's it?
Just in general.
I mean, just yeah, like Michelle said, we're doing a bunch of field trips, so we have the one this Wednesday, we have one next Thursday. Um, both of them are in Portland, it's for the world related to the unit, we're knowing there's different places in worship. Um, so we're really excited about that. A field trip coming up in November, uh, it's called Experimental PDX. So we're gonna take the whole middle school, half are gonna start, they'll build uh, Lego robotic robots and then they program them to run through these. The other half will be a craft and we'll switch, uh, we're really excited about that.
Any questions?
Those two, three go to the zoo?
No, they didn't, they're not signed up yet, I'll have to get on it. It was kind of funny that I saw the K one and then I saw the yeah. And and um, due to medical, uh, some medical needs that um, we will send Ashley um, when we need to on the field trip and then. Daphne will get to have all the medical stuff here, so and we've worked it out with the nurses to make sure that we're very covered, so.
Okay, so we had a couple of action items in this section. I would entertain a motion. On a recommendation pair and it's more.
We'll make a motion that we recommend hiring uh, Rhanna Seymour, nutritional services assistant, path the hours stated in the ED report.
Great, I got second from Julia, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. I also would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty three, twenty four audit, anyone wants to?
Do we want to just discuss the audit first?
Oh. Yeah, probably, yeah.
I mean, I think we're all ready to.
Like you're accepting the audit, right, because you're accepting.
So. Are we going to have, should we do a presentation of the audit?
Well, you could make a motion and then you can have discussion, right? You make a motion and you have discussion about it.
Yeah, I was wondering if anyone wants to present it to us or if we're just gonna discuss what we think based off of what we've looked at.
Well, we did kind of present the whole audit. I presented him the financial thing, so she did.
I guess I would love to have the board treasurer get way in, so. I mean, I I think that it it's been completed, um, maybe we could approve and we can make a motion. To uh, have a discussion about some of the recommendations made in the management letter because. Many recommendations and I know that the um, the IT control policies are.
The loads are just recommendations, they don't really affect us any, they're always going to make a lot of these recommendations.
Right.
Um, the IT control policies.
I think it would just be nice to have carve out a bit of time to just go through everything so that. We we all know what mechanisms have been put into place and um, just to make sure that. Some of the mistakes that have been made.
Do we do we separate these things like kind of our cases so we accept the audit and move on it that way, but then also learn from the audit? And it's and the thing I'm not clear on Maria is if you want to wait for that second discussion till we have a bill in the room? Or are you comfortable having that discussion because Shannon seems to be ready to give us updates on those recommendations now?
I did ask the Valia because I had that same like first thought and she felt comfortable. She thought that the folks working on the audit did the best, have have got to the best possible place and um. We just need to ensure be on top of things in the future, audits in the future, um, and not have the same findings moving forward. And that there are proactive plans and goals in place now, so that was the gist of text that I brought back from the Valia.
Yeah, I I mean, I think that audit is.
Yeah.
I feel really comfortable.
Yeah, if you want to discuss any of these things, I would be happy to give you the information or if you want to do it at another time.
I yeah, I mean, we could do it now, I guess it, you know, I like to dig in, dig into things, so you you know. To make it, but I don't know, I I see it more as as an educational. I don't know, tonight is not, I don't know how much time I have. You, I would be willing to.
I would want to say like you certainly can, but let's remember this, this is from the twenty three, twenty four audit, so like.
Two years ago.
And none of us were act, well, some of you might have been here, but the people that were in charge like doing business, you know, and all that, like nobody was actually. Here to 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 be part of that, um, I would say like when we're done with the twenty four, twenty five audit, I think that's gonna be the one you want to spend the time on. Because that is like in like that's more current in place, so I just personally, I'm just. I I don't, there's not much that we're gonna we found and I was actually surprised that there was only really two two findings.
Two findings.
There's two findings that were reported to the state secretary, so and those are.
And I may have to catch on each one of these really quick if you want me to just just quickly just review and just tell you what we have in place. And then we could just move on and then if you have more than, you know, we can always have a deeper discussion afterwards if you'd like.
I think that's fine.
Okay, so the journal, one of the findings of the journal entries and um, basically um, there was not a double approval process, right? So they said during one of our testing, we had journal entries, who knows that backup is not kept for journal entry, well, since twenty three, twenty four, as you can see, twenty four, twenty five. We have already, they have already made that change and they have all of the backup on and for any of the documents that the auditor has asked for for twenty four, twenty five. Audit has been able to be, so we definitely have already um, fixed that and also um. Uh, where it says that we recommend that all spring backup be kept for journal entries made and if someone other than the person who makes every entry, review them for reasonableness. So we've put that um, internal control process where I am also reviewing all of the journal entries that um, Veronica. Does, so um, bank reconciliation, sort of the same thing, our only one person will believe that they weren't found. Or they weren't done in in a. In twenty three, twenty four, but now twenty four, twenty five, they've all been done and they're all submitted with the audit. Um, as for this year since I'm here, again, um, I will be reviewing all of the bank reconciliations. Um, as well as um, Michelle after Veronica does them, so there's just another set of eyes constantly on everything. Um, and those were the only two findings, now as for the best practices, segregation of duties. Um, we've already pretty much done that since Veronica and I are both here, so we're able to just split some of those up and um. Like such as if I'm doing payroll, I also give all of the through process reports to Veronica and Michelle before I process payroll. So that way there's another set of eyes before it's completed, so it'll be the same thing with the business items. Um, the quick book accounting software, um, I think that's just because. They feel that uh, it's not secure enough, but we're pretty secure and um, both. Veronica and I have um, admin access, so she's not the only one with the super access to um, the books. Um, expenditures during testing, we don't have evidence of a, no evidence of approval on thirty five.
I think that that's great, one that we used to look at payroll as a board, but we haven't been doing that recently.
We're not just payroll, but we were we were given the whole register for each month, we used to approve those. Check register, which included.
I will kind of know that, you know, if that's what you.
It was past practice.
Okay, alright.
So it was just the payroll register, or?
It was the check register.
Check register. It was, it didn't usually generate a whole lot of conversation, but every once in a while, there would be one very large ticket item or one odd. And there would be a board member who would ask, like, you know, what was this $3,000 for? And it was helpful to see, I think also, just given some of what we've discussed about like having a, having an overpayment or an underpayment. You just have another set of eyes on it.
Yeah. I think as a board member too, it gives you a better awareness of just how much is happening, what's going on.
We can do that. I see no issues with that. To look for that in the next quarter. I think the thing that we changed is we used to put it up on the screen, and then we stopped doing that. And expenditures during their test of expenditures, we needed no evidence of approval on 35 dispersments and no support was provided for one expenditure. Again, this was the 23-24 audit. And so since then, they've made, you know, a lot better best practices. So I don't think that's going to be even an issue for the 24-25, as opposed to the 25-26. We recommend that all dispersments obtain approval before dispersment is made. It's being done, it was done last year, and it's being done again this year. So I don't feel, and I don't have, think I have any problems with it now. And improper expense supporting documentation. Now that we've moved to everything being in online or in Google, Google Drive, everything's online. So we have access to all the documentation, so I don't think that that is a problem. IT control policies, again, the super users included the business manager, who is also involved in various aspects of using school software. We recommend that the school consider someone other than people with full admin access. I, I'm not sure what, because of this school is so small. I've been the super user access at the places, other school districts that I've worked with, for a bunch of accountings or a bunch of the systems. And that's just the nature of being a small, small school district. There's not really a whole lot of people to take over the. And usually the business manager, or let's see, in my instance, the payroll manager, you're the one who's in it all the time, with, who has knowledge of the admin stuff anyways. And so to have somebody else have the admin access is kind of silly. So I think being a small, small school district, I don't think that we're, yes.
Maybe just for backup, there's, we have some sort of system in place, so for some reason we left, we got access.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, and maybe that's what they were worried about back in the 20s. Okay, so yeah. And so there is more than one person who has super admin access in each of our systems. So in the pay loss system and the QuickBooks system. And so I think that's really the only systems we're in charge of in this frontline, we'll still have that. So, so yeah. We won't ever be in the same situation that we were, where we couldn't get into any banks or. Bank systems or sophomore systems, so.
And I think what we could do, because I'm looking what we have online, is like put the, just those statements, like, and there. We can just split through the statements, because when you look through the statements, they say what they're, I mean. And, you know, lose your payroll, or it says, they're providing benefits, card, you know, card services. And then we can also put the credit card things up there, because it just, you see a lot of Amazon.
Yeah.
Amazon, Amazon, Amazon. So, and the cool thing is with, with Amazon and our credit card, it's a business account. And so Veronica's able to go in, and so if I ordered something, she actually can go in and look at the receipt when it's being ordered. And it's like, I look at what Dawn orders. Veronica looks like what we both order, so like, we're all looking at who's ordering what. So it's, that's the nice thing about the business.
I sort of check and see if we got used kind of with this connected admin. So when we access the LGMP account, or we have transactions in there, I get an email.
Okay, so you push that over. Okay.
I think it may have to happen after.
And LGMP thing was, that was kind of a thing to change. But we'll do it for you. Just see the signature.
Yes, I'll send you those forms.
Thanks a lot for that.
Appreciate it.
That was a really challenging time, and it's just nice to know.
Well, like Veronica says, like, and I think it's because at that time, there were three different business managers. And there literally were checking accounts that were never reconciled. And so she had to go through and reconcile everything. Now, the nice thing is, like, if you go in and look at her, like, everything is, everything has a folder, everything's been done. And so it's, it's like she's on top of that. And I can, now we've got Shannon, and she can kind of chat with. And I think having, again, Shannon onsite is super helpful as well, so. Yeah, what a lot of work to get caught up on that, thanks for doing it. And there's some good systems, I mean, I think there's just the whole Google, like, if, there's some nice, like, I can, like, if I want to go find something, I can go in and find something, it's pretty easy to find.
Can I make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 audit?
Okay, you get a second. Thanks, Dan, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passed through. Thank you.
I just want to just a brief comment on that 23-24 financial time. I just want to thank the community here, and the board members, everybody that came together to overcome that, it was a lot of work.
Vavalia did a lot of work.
I wish Vavalia would have.
Yeah. Okay, and then we already talked about the 2024-25 audit. Anything else? From? All good, okay. And then DOE project, we talked about the extension, we don't know, we're waiting on the update. And so the budget, so we're like, we're pretty on budget with the HVAC. We have the window in the pipeline, so it has to have a contractor approved, a contractor approval. And Christian didn't say, as I've said it a couple of times, I hear you, I'm going to where you work. So he's pushing through what he can. Our hope is we get that, you know, sooner than later, but it's at the mercy of the federal government. The heat track right now, we're continually working on some issues, like the other morning, it was all crossed it over. And so we've been, and so we have something coming on Friday to kind of look at rebalancing it. Because it's also gotten, it's fairly calm and quiet most of the time. But like today, it was very noisy, it was very irritated about something, and it's a lot of condensation coming out of it. We had a lot of trouble, the upper floor seems to work fairly well. The lower floor is where we've had our problems, the cafeteria, like the kitchen, to be specific. Like, one day the heat was on, which isn't necessary, like, and we couldn't turn it off. So Mitch is learning more and more. We are bringing in, Deatho is gonna come in, and they're going to learn the system as well. So that we, when we need to call someone, we have someone to call, so. And so just kind of working out the things, there's a lot of finished work that needs to be done. And I have told Veronica that we're not going to pay any more invoices until some of that is finished, and so she knows that. Well, yeah, because, like, there are just a lot, there's a lot of greats that are, just a lot of different things. Yeah, they have, if you go downstairs in the staff room, they have, they've sucked the, those kind of crazy pages, got rid of those pages, and put everything back up. We still have a problem in the gym, as far as I can discern, and also in Sarah, Anne Marie's classroom. She has literally these black pipes that go into her cabinet, that they love, orange foam, and it was soft orange foam. So that are supposed to kind of case that in for us, so. Henry said he's gonna do it, so. And then did the gym get fixed? I saw folks working on it, the. They're still working, so they did come in and they did think, because we had, where they had the things coming through the windows, there was literally, like, there was just openings. But I was, I was worried about birds coming in. Yeah, but they did come in to fix that, and so they're working on that, so. And those, I think the gym is, again, it's just a lot of finished work at this point, a lot of finished work. And, yeah, and so we did need, and we do have an accident about the insulation. Again, this is what we need to do, is we'll get this, and then as soon as Brent has some draft minutes, they, they'll take the draft minutes. And I'm going to give them the other minutes of the approval. Then we'll send this to DOE, and then they'll just, it just puts this in the pipeline to get the contractor approved. And then once the contractor's approved, then we can actually, and we have the extension, then we can start moving on windows and insulation. The solar, just a little update on solar, Brent is like a bulldog with the solar. So he's gonna get a solar, we don't know how, but it's gonna happen. We now are moving towards, McKenna's now involved, we're moving towards having some sort of covered, like a covered area, and put the solar on top. And he has, where the playground areas, we have over like where the middle school is, covering where the concrete is. John and I were looking at like the parking lot, even if we had something, because back at the tennis court. Like, there's like looking at places that you can build something and build it for not a lot of time, so. Anyway, there's a hole, there's a hole, yeah. I did have to take the email that Brent sent, and put it in ChatGPT and ask it for bullet points. If anybody wants that, I'll share it with them, I was just like, I just didn't know, what are you telling me here?
Well, yeah, we need to decide on the size, you know, and how big we want, we want to get an analysis of, you know, what we could expect from the solar. And then we can start getting different structures quoted out. And we actually have an architect, a parent of the school, getting involved, which is great, so.
Your parents.
Yes. I think he's probably gonna be the dual utility of this structure, like what, I mean, you know, there's been talk about, there's a lot of pressure put on the gym in the winter. Like, do we have an outdoor space that's something for the children that's out of the elements? Or like, what are the, what are the other benefits that this could provide? Right, and I think if we can find that, and we're probably more appealing to spend money on that. And hopefully we have extension as well, and so we're not. The other thing I've heard, just because I happen to know someone who spends a fair amount of time in the gym lately. Is that the gym has gotten a lot noisier, that the sound insulation, because we have sheet rocked the ceiling, has gone way down. And so I wonder if there's gonna be a future expense around, or something we should think about as far as sound insulation? I know that's something local has to do with our, you know, and can be not.
Yeah, they're actually like, again, Nathan and I talked about this a lot. So we, we have new gym pads up there, but the kids decided that they needed to hang on them, so they came out. So once we get those, those paddings back up, and then looking at, there's, we can get some ceiling panels up there and get a bid on that, which I don't think is super expensive. There's also other ways where you can get canvases and have kids paint on them, and then you put insulation, you put batting behind it, the thing goes up, and they act, they do the same thing, you know? So we have lots of ideas. So, yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah.
I've just heard it's noisy, I haven't actually experienced it, but maybe skate night will be it first. So just to be clear, this action item is, we are approving this $38,000 to get this person in. But this, we are not actually going to expend, spend this money unless we get the extension.
Absolutely, yeah. This, because this is, yeah.
It's 29, 29, 462.
Yeah, I think we added it before you got here. I think we should spend it no matter what, because it's insulation above here, and we'll, we'll spend it either by pumping electricity through the heater, or we'll spend it either way.
But we don't want, we want to.
Insulation contract went for the window.
Well, so this is not right. But we do want to wait till we get the extension, so that we can get paid back for it, even if we don't.
Agreed, understood.
Well, I think like, a couple of things are gonna happen, we're gonna get the extension, and we're gonna be able to move forward. We're not gonna get the extension, and then we're probably gonna still have the.
Yeah, well, if we move forward on the insulation before we get the, know whether or not we're getting the extension, we will not get paid back for it. So if, so what, no, you're saying like you're taking a risk? So if we move forward with the, with the insulation, and we don't get, if we do get that, then.
That's great, we'll get reimbursed.
But what we do have to get is the contract, what we can't do, we're moving forward, you have to have the contractor approved. So that's what we, so if we got the contractor approved, and we're still waiting for the extension, then I'd say you might as well want to move forward, right? Because you're either gonna get paid back, or you're not gonna get paid back. I am a little worried about, when did we say the price? I don't have the price yet, because I know this is. So that, so, yeah, we're gonna go with that, but we might want to approve it for 35, just in case. I am, because this was back in September, and we were not able to get the, we weren't able to make sure that this is still a current bid, because it's over the 30 days. So, up to you guys, though.
I mean, I think we saw a lot of benefit by keeping, moving forward with our plan, and we saw that that paid off.
I mean, I guess going ahead and approve this, or. I was just thinking about maybe giving it a little bit of a cushion.
I mean, I don't know, watching board meetings, that also just invites the negotiation back. I mean, I think we're gonna try to hold this line, and we can come back for a special meeting, and we can approve.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the insulation contracts for $29,462 from the council. With, solve those.
Second, thank you, McKenna, all those in favor? Okay, Marie is accused from that, motion passed through. Great, um, oh. The next action, or the next item is discussion on school milk, milk properties. This was something that we put on the board agenda last time, because we got talking about chocolate milk, and how, and I am gonna go down there and.
I love to help, but I didn't try to narrow it down.
Thank you. Yeah, so we did receive some information from Dawn on the amount of milk that's going out, going in to the kids. Which I don't have on me, if somebody wants to bring it up, but hopefully they've already saw it. We were just kind of talking about the sugar intake, and whether or not we wanted to promote sugar drinks. During all the school day, they're not allowed to have chocolate milk in the morning. I think it was that the precares aren't allowed to have it at all. But everybody else can for lunch, is that right?
It's only offered for lunch.
And I looked when I was helping in the lunchroom the other day, and I think there, if I remember correctly, there are 27 grams of sugar in that little, I mean.
Is it five or eight ounces?
I don't know. It's little.
So it's definitely the most popular choice. That was, if you buy a lunch, like, it would be 1,600.
Candy bar out there.
Exactly. A banana.
Can you tell us, because you mentioned that at Corbett, you all got the chocolate milk. We actually, because it was part of our writing program, I did this study, and they had, the kids actually research chocolate milk or no chocolate milk. And so we would bring in a bunch of articles, and Jamie Oliver was kind of famous for like dumping a bowl of sugar on a cluster or something like. I can't remember, but he had like a mission to get rid of chocolate milk in that. So we had a lot of articles about why not, why you should not have chocolate milk, and then we had a bunch of articles about why you should have chocolate milk. And the nice thing is, most of the kids recognize that the why you shouldn't have chocolate milk mostly comes from the dairy council. Because they're trying to push milk. And that you do get kids drinking more milk, I actually, the O D lady, when she came, she was explaining to me how wonderful it is, because kids are drinking more milk. And, and I was like, and it's a lot of sugar, like, the teacher's just like, it is a ton of sugar. And there is, they are coming out with more restrictions on sugar, and so you are gonna see a lot of change in the chocolate milk, of how they do sugars. I don't think it's ever gonna be that low. And so you do have to offer two different kinds, but it doesn't, it has to be, it's like 1% and a, we can't do all of it.
I know.
It's, I think a 1% and a 2% for the choices that we do.
There really isn't a choice.
1% and 2%. Yeah. And so, but, you know, it was painful for a little bit, but then they did correct it, and then. And then there was a really weird milk shortage, and we actually, we actually. Um, and we actually, we actually hadn't bring in chocolate milk, because that was the only milk that was available. And they were like, uh, don't get used to this, but the teachers really liked it. Because I gotta tell you, like, after, you know, these kids are nuts.
You know, it's not good.
Yeah.
I go right after lunch to volunteer for math. And like, they are, they are, they're.
And some of them will get not one card, but two.
And actually, there's someone who gets, takes others and drinks five.
Yes.
And we never offer chocolate milk until three years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it's scary.
And it doesn't seem aligned.
There's a, I think, uh, twenty twenty three seventy from the C B C that puts the rate of prediabetic twelve to seventeen years at thirty two point seven percent.
Wow.
And I mean, that, that does capture some of our middle schools. However, I mean, it starts younger, younger. So. That's a lot of sugar.
Twenty eight grams of sugar is seven teaspoons of sugar.
Wow. I love that chocolate bar.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so are there reasons we could not go back to what Moser previously did? Where we have just two milk options that were not flavored milk?
Well, and I will, I don't even know if it's possible, but if it's gotta be like one percent, can it be like one percent kefir? Or something is actually like healthy and flavored? Like, they could do strawberry drinkable yogurt instead. That's one percent, that's, I don't know, my kids love it, but.
Yeah, that's pretty good, it also has a lot of sugar, not as much chocolate.
It's a transitional, and it's actually getting probiotics. Just if we can do some loopholes with a swap out, where it's not like revolting against us, we're just trading.
Do we offer, I mean, I'm gonna get woo woo here, but do we offer a milk alternative for our children that are lactose?
We have water.
No, we also. We actually asked one of the kids, like, um, what do you prefer? I mean, I think it's very on that, he's like, what do you want? Oh, okay, what's all this?
But they're, yeah, they don't like it.
I think also it's just really important for us, like, our kids are forming habits that repeat with them for the rest of their lives, as far as food goes. Um, and we have in our, um, handbook that we're encouraging, like, healthy, people to send, when they're sending something from home, for it to be healthy. So I just think that walking our topic school is important.
The A I says that Life Place Pro Bugs can be operated for in the school, doesn't meet any school nutrition standards. So it's a keeper.
Oh, really?
Keeper would, would. Oh, so we have to check, we can't do Nancy's, we can't do local, like, it has to be.
I don't know.
It has to be in.
Maybe I would suggest that we just start with a transition that's just to milk, not chocolate. And then we consider as a board at a future time, adding additional options, like making oatmeal flour widely available. If my children are not lactose intolerant, but they like oatmeal, it's also higher, a little higher in sugar. Um, or keeper or something else that, just start with what seems like a pretty traditional staff.
It's like a, to go back to. At two times a milk.
You know?
And if we, um, move to do this, when would it affect if we both own that?
We probably wanna do it after, like, I, I, I would.
After Christmas break or something?
Okay, so we can kind of forget.
Right. Or Thanksgiving, after, yeah.
Sooner we'd be back. We could just like, you, we could use up what we've got.
Yeah, well, I gotta tell you, like, we go through, like, we, we, we would, we use up what we got every week, so. Sometimes we start here on a Monday with pumpkin milk. But if there may be a free pumpkin. We're hoping for that truck to come out and get fixed. So, and we know whole milk is not something we can obtain.
Whole milk is allowed, we can allow. But that could change, because there are going to be rules.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
So, uh, I would make a motion that we transition the kitchen to serving, um, no flavored milk, but two percent and one percent milk, starting, um. So I, so instead of being very specific, because now when I look at this, it says skim milk or one percent, but two percent.
Oh, yeah, so just saying no, right.
So I don't know, so can, can we look at the transition away from flavored milk? Okay, to the, maybe like we say something about.
Replacing the chocolate milk with.
With approved.
With an approved.
Order.
Okay.
So. I'll make a motion that we, we, we trans, we, uh.
Eliminate.
Eliminate flavored milk from the lunchtime options that, uh, of our school lunch. That we, um, continue to offer two options that are approved, starting December first. I got a second from Dan, all those in favor? Uh, Marie? Behind you all.
You say December first.
Yes.
That's the Monday after.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
To all the children that will grumble and all the parents that will also grumble, I think that there's a time and a place for chocolate milk, but I don't think that it's daily in the middle of the school day.
Oh, one hundred percent.
No, I mean, I, I fully expect that there will be grumbles, and I think Michelle will bear the brunt of that conversation. And Jen, um, both from students and from parents. And I would just encourage us to, um, not say, it's not that we hate chocolate milk. I offer my children chocolate milk at various moments in time, when we're camping or whatever it is, a special occasion. But, um, uh, I will fully say that I am a parent who does not allow chocolate milk in the middle of the day at lunch at home, and I'm sure that my children are for taking care. So I really appreciate, if you wanna send chocolate milk with your kid and their packed lunch, like, you still have that option. Um, but as far as what kids are able to select for themselves without adult supervision, starting as young as, you know, four and five year olds, kindergarten.
We'll put something in the newsletter to warn them of.
Let them know it's coming, they've got a month to.
And with some, like.
Yes, information.
I also feel encouraged that when we, this was how it was at Moser for a long, long time. And also that you've gone through this transition at Corbett and this is not the only.
And I live to tell, yeah. And they still. Okay, great. Um, what about the school bus and transportation updates?
Yeah. So I haven't had a chance to check in with Dan and Michelle, and I don't know if, uh, we're ready to make, uh, have an action item. And we actually did, you all will recall, approve the purchase of a bus. I can't remember what the budget number was on it. But I wanted to share with the board, and I think it would be helpful to, just for information sharing purposes at least, and for discussion, let you all know that we've gotten, and I can take no credit for this, but Michelle and Dan have gathered quotes on a school bus. And some of those buses are sitting in the lot ready, and if we purchase them, that we would have them in a couple of weeks. And other buses are out of like three hundred goes out. Um, and so I feel some urgency to move this conversation along. And I will say there's a range of options for purchasing a very small van that will seat nine students, um, to a seventy seven passenger bus. Um, and you have this full range. We had talked about kind of a thirty five, like a mini bus. Um, and I, let, let me just run through, just without giving you all the details of like this kind of chassis and this, this many gallon fuel tank. Um, I will say we are, we are looking at buses that have, and Dan may, and Michelle may be able to tell you better than I can, but have some minimums of like drop chains for safety, because it's coming up over Seven Mile Hill in the winter. And video cameras, and so that they're standardized with all of the equipment that D twenty one has. Um, and I would say the range of what, uh, buses runs from one that has, um, five rows of seats, so ten seats total. And then you think about each seat can hold between, like comfortably two students, uh, but can, can physically hold three if you need them to, right? So we're starting, um, with like a bus that has, a midsize bus that has, um, six rows, twelve seats for a hundred and fifty K, um, that can hold, um, twenty four very comfortably, thirty six if needed. Uh, there's also, it looks, it looks like this, it's kind of like your, your medium small bus. Um, there's a similar bus that's a little bit, uh, like, can only hold fourteen passengers. In two seats, um, that's a hundred and twenty six. Um, the, the range, uh, continues where you have, there's a five row that can hold twenty if you have two, or thirty if you have three for a hundred and thirty four. There's a six row, I'm just gonna run through this and, and then we can chat a little bit more about it. There's a six row that can hold, that also holds, um, twenty four if you have two, or thirty six if you have three for a hundred and forty six, five hundred. Um, the, there's that nine person passenger van, that's a hundred and three K. And then there are, there's a medium sized bus, um, and I'll highlight this one, because I like this one, um, that has a, um, thirty six if you have two to a seat, and forty eight if you have three to a seat. And it's a hundred and eighty eight, eight, a hundred and eighty K, it's a nine row bus. Um, what I like about that is it would fit two classes at the forty eight. So you could have all of four, five, all of three, three. Um, and then there's the biggest bus, which, uh, D twenty one has several of, that's a seventy seven passenger bus, or, or fifty two if you have two to a seat. So it's seventy seven full capacity, but fifty two, and it's also a hundred and eighty K. So, um, just giving you a sense of kind of the range, it goes from a hundred and twenty six with fourteen passengers to a hundred and fifty roughly, for those buses that are about thirty six kids, to a hundred and eighty if you jump up to the forty eight, um, or seventy of them. So that's kind of the world, the world of buses in a nutshell.
Can you remind us about how many kids are using the bus now?
Yeah, and I don't know that we have those fingers on our.
Oh, I do, so how many, so how many are getting, like, in the morning? Um, so they pick up, I would say there's quite a few that come off of that bus. Nineteen of them are picked up along the way. Okay. So that's, so what, because that's.
The Seven Mile.
Yeah, so there's about nineteen kids that get picked up along the way. Which is the number that we wanted, because the other ones, we can pop on a bus and drive them down the freeway and then change, like, instead of six fifteen, they got picked up at thirty. Forty. Yeah, because they still need to be here around seven ish, because the high school and, because they pick up kids and go up that way.
For this.
Yeah. Okay, can you, sorry, I'm like forgetting a little bit.
Yeah, so the, the details for, the, the plan for next year is to take the very first bus that becomes available in the DOWs. Um, and I think the timing of that was roughly eight A M.
It's a little after eight, because that's when they drop off.
Yeah, yeah, it's roughly eight A M and have that bus leave immediately from Wataca and bring kids here. So you would have them here roughly at eight thirty. Um, then, uh, we would have a second bus that is our Moser bus, that's leaving slightly earlier than that eight A M and coming up over Seven Mile and picking up kids and also getting here at eight thirty. That's a longer run. So there will be kids picked up in the hills, and then there will be, so there will be those two buses.
And the Wataca bus would still be a Wasco bus, or would that be a new one for us?
So Wasco is gonna run their bus anyway, um, or, or will pay for that, those miles. Um, and we would own a bus and we would be responsible for hiring the bus driver that would go up over Seven Mile. And the reason for not getting like the mega seven, seven, like, why not go to the biggest bus? Was one, safety, uh, um, up over that hill in the winter or whatever, you don't wanna run the biggest bus, especially if you have a relatively inexperienced bus driver. But with whatever driver, um, I would say you don't necessarily wanna max out. Um, and we don't have that many kids on that route. Now, I expect that number will want to grow if we have a pickup time. Like, I may wanna bring my kids, they don't come near my house, but I can go across Osborn Cut Off. And there may be parents who say, okay, well, this is not dropping my kid off at, you know, six forty five, so now I'm interested at seven forty five. Um, and that's a better time for me. Um, so, uh, I do think we don't wanna be too close to that nineteen number. Um, yeah.
What was that, a medium, that size one, or two students in each seat, that was smaller than the biggest one? Like a forty?
Thirty, thirty six, or two in a seat.
Yeah, in like the big size.
So the thirty six to forty eight.
But we will need a transportation always, if we have more. That's something that I learned from Rick Stuckey, so maybe we might.
So I, so just to clarify though, um, whatever we do, we'll buy the bus, North Wasco is still gonna have a bus. And they will still train the driver, the driver will, whoever we have driving will still be an, will be an employee of theirs. We won't be employed now. So.
But we'll pay the wage, no?
No. Well, we'll, they'll, they'll. Yeah, and if they have a driver available, so what we talked to Lisa about is that they were very eager to have an additional driver, and they might use them for other things, if that person is not, like, an empty, a complaint during the day. Like, if that person is available, um, that, you know, they may use that person for various bus routes. So, so that if we wanted to, could we use the bus for field trips or? Yeah, and we, the thing is, like, we, like, I'm not really worried about, um, using art, like, because we are able to go on field trips already. And we just, and we get billed for them. And, and honestly, like, going on a field trip, because seventy percent of that is reimbursable and not that. And a lot of places like the zoo, they have a grant for it. The Discovery Center has, has a grant for it. So they, they want people to come to their place so often. I don't think that that's, um, I used to think that field trip was a big thing, but it seems like they're very, uh, I mean, they're, I mean, you got, I mean, you, already scheduled a bunch of field trips, so they're, they're pretty flexible. And it's probably because T T one doesn't have a lot of extra money right now, but they're probably not going on a lot of field trips. So.
Do we know which of these two are actually available? Right now, they're all, the both of those are available.
Both of which two?
Sorry, the, the both of them are one of these underneath.
The seventy seven and the forty eight, yeah.
Uh, so, the kind of thing there, um, some of our costs is reimbursed, right?
Seventy percent. For, for any, go to school or field trip. Now, if we had a sports team that is not reimbursable.
So the cost of the bus, up to seventy percent reimbursed.
And, and there are, uh, in fact, I don't remember her name, the lady from the Western Bus. So we can also finance these, and there's some weird, like, the, like, you could spread it over so many years and it's, and it's, uh, and club of that is also reimbursable from the, from the federal government.
And then, when we get the full specs for those from Western Bus, just, you have the other guy's contact that I gave you from the other bus. But the one they quoted was a diesel, gasoline's cheaper than diesel, general, and the motors are. Um, so we just need to have apples to apples quote, because it's like.
Understanding is we cannot buy a diesel bus.
Well, it was quoted as a diesel bus.
I, I don't know, I, I would, my understanding is, can, I can talk to this lady, and actually, Todd told me that because of, from Orbit, um, school are not allowed to buy diesel buses because of the views.
But maybe, maybe it's some old thing that's just still in there, but I wanted to, like.
I would ask him about that.
Well, I don't have the full, so if we get a spec quote from Western.
Okay.
Then we can just compare and say this has some needs.
So all of Western's buses are either gas or electric.
Okay.
Weird, um. I'd love to do electric, but it's, I would wait. Corbett has an electric bus, and it, it's gonna be like, it's, it's, it's gonna be cold. Cold, and if, and it's long, so we would, we're not quite there yet. But you can drift all the way down.
The thing I'm saying, that comparison, apples to apples, is I think this other company has buses sitting in the lot that are ready to go. So rather than waiting for three and a half days or whatever, we may get, as long as we can get the same bus.
Yeah.
But we, I wanna have that option. So I just wanna know what the specs are.
I guess, one, one, I, one idea would be for us to up what we've approved, and I can't remember what we, exactly what dollar figure was, maybe we can look back on. Was it back in March last year that we did that? It's when we did the four day school, though, that's March.
Which is March.
Yeah, if we go back and look at that, maybe the dollar figure was, that we up it to include these hundred and eighty K buses, so that when we have our October thirty meeting with transportation, with the four day school committee, we can have all of the figures and we can make a determination on the bus, um, that's within this range. The range going up to, um. He says here that the forty eight passenger bus is just under a hundred and eighty K, and the seventy seven is in the low one eight. I don't have dates here, but like Dan says, there's various vendors for buses, and we may be waiting three hundred days one place, and somebody else may have a twenty twenty five that's on the lot. So whether you order the twenty sixth, which is being constructed, or the twenty five that's sitting on. But we don't wanna, we don't wanna wait three hundred days to get a bus, right? At this point. At this point, I think that would be problematic. Um so I think we're gonna have to, yeah. But I'm, it would be nice um to be able to purchase or order the bus. Um maybe before the next boarding, I guess, put it that way, so. We can figure out what we approve the amount for.
Dan on it right now, no.
And there is not much of a market for used buses, is what I was told, because. Um you get reimbursed seventy percent of the sales price, but it's over time, so people hold on to buses. It comes back to you over.
And is that, who does that reimbursement?
Federal government.
Who says, I think financial details.
Within the approved dollar amount? Within the approved finance and the financial details.
Yeah.
So maybe we need.
Well, also, I have a question. The billing, what will that look like next year?
The the what?
The billing.
What will be charged?
Yeah, what will be charged.
What do you mean, from North Wasco?
Yeah, from North Wasco.
So North Wasco would, they have kind of a formula that they already use, where they do it by the mile. And so they would just, and then, so let's say something costs, it, the trip costs a hundred dollars, they only charge us thirty.
Yeah, that, that, the reimbursement, I understand, I guess, I'm just. Asking if we uh will be paying for. A different amount than 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 we do typically in the.
Well, there's another bus driver. And currently, just to like be clear, currently, the only time that we ever get charged for anything is if we have school. Like Friday, then October ten, I'm expecting to see a bill because we had school and they didn't. That's the only time that we ever get charged and we go out field trips. We don't get, we don't see any other charges for that.
Because they have to come here anyway.
They're, yeah, they're here anywhere.
But we will be adding a new.
Right, and so that would, and so we would.
What will that look like, right?
And we had.
We did all that math last year and all of those figures were discussed, right?
It was not, it was not a large figure.
Yeah, that's.
It's about twenty dollars a day is what my recollection is.
Right, I'm just wondering, you know, we do have the transportation budget that they. Uh have, it does change depending on how much they will reimburse. I was just curious to know if any projections had been.
What do you mean that tra-?
Um if the cost of per mile uh will change.
Yeah, I don't know that that goes, and and again, seventy percent of it is reimbursable. So it it becomes, like, it's always amazing to me when schools are in a budget crisis and they cut transportation. Because that's the one that you see the least paying for your bus, because you're, you're literally only paying thirty percent of the cost of it.
And has that changed at all with the new administration?
Not yet. I'd say transportation reimbursement cost and cost is for someone who has, like, has, gets reimbursed for miles for work. And th- those, that is a figure that does not bounce around a lot and it takes a long time for it to cha-change. Um so even though fuel prices go up, you're getting still the same amount per mile that you're getting reimbursed in like, the federal government.
So the transportation offered on the fifty, will be reimbursed at seventy percent? The transportation offer number one? Fifty, the option that we were.
They, they, they already run school on the fifth day, so it's not gonna change for them. They already have school by then. If they didn't have school on Fridays, they never changed for us, because they were asking for a bus route that wouldn't exist.
Or for Fridays, or we're. Change times, because, you know, because that bus gets here at seven o'clock in the morning. We are adding a route, which we talked about last year, at length, and we wouldn't pay, expect to pay for that route. The total of that amount, I can't recall off the top of my head, um was uh was not like substantial. So it's over the course of the year or the day. So um it was a pretty modest. Payment to be able to have a later start time.
And that's still a plan.
And sorry, just go back a little bit. So you were saying that the bus would leave Wataca like right before eight? And that would be, right, yeah.
So I don't, I I wanna just time out, because I don't think this is the time or place to have the full four-day school week discussion. I think we should focus on the bus. We do have a committee on the four-day.
My question was on the bus.
Oh, sorry.
Um but it, maybe it's not right, right now. I'm just wondering, like, is the school district okay with a eight o'clock bus for us? From Wataca?
Yes, okay, so it it's a little bit, so their, their school begins at eight. So they have to drop off the kids and then they would have to get to.
Okay, cool.
So we're just at the transition time, so it would be around eight. And we figured that we could probably start school around eight or. Is what the whole, and it would be dropping those kids up and running them into class, not having that half an hour that we have early. Um so then we would probably have to figure out some sort of like, in our dead of lunch, breakfast would be more. Like combined with um recess. There would be a half an hour because you gotta. Fifteen-minute breakfast, fifteen-minute recess, and then they would have a later brunch. Okay, so.
And to start, the other bus, we don't have an exact time on when that is to get over here, but they'll figure that out. It's sometime between seven forty-five and eight, probably.
And I also think like the advantage is if we have that other bus where we can, that we can transport twenty kids that are somewhere. Even if we ju- this is just a big if, but even if we don't go through the four-day school week, it would, it could solve the problem. Of the six fifteen, picking up a bus. Because if we could figure out how to get, if we could like pick up those twenty kids, basically. And then the rest of the kids pop on the freeway, they wouldn't have to go on the bus until six forty to get here, so.
So Julia, you were saying.
So I'm just saying, if 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 we had.
But there's still one of five school weeks.
Yeah.
It would be initial. Um, sorry. Yeah, concerns with the later start for the kids in Wataca, so it sounds like either way, we would address a later start.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's not so such a later start. It would be a later.
A later, a later.
Later, yeah.
And one would be a moderating change of like being completely like maybe twenty minutes earlier.
Yeah, yep.
Chick, chick, okay, chick has something.
Uh, sorry, uh, because maybe this, I'm thinking about it wrong. So currently, though, we have such an early start time becau- and am I correct in thinking they don't charge for that? Because they have to come get kids anyway to take merit, but now that wouldn't be the case if we start later. So we will get charged for that one and the other, so we'll be, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so we would not get charged for the return bus, because we would be using what now the late buses, which we don't finish that for now, but in the morning.
Right, just.
We would be adding a route.
Okay, yeah, that's, I just wanted to.
So what do you need from us, clarify?
I mostly wanna keep you guys in the loop about the bus conversation. And and I think that we're getting close to purchasing a bus. I wanna include the four-day committee, because I wanna respect all of those folks in the decision-making around what bus to purchase. And I think we have a little bit more information gathering, but I think it would be really helpful if the board approved the purchase of a bus up to a dollar limit. Um or uh since we've, since we've just had an approval on purchasing a bus, but financials were like. And what I see is the most expensive bus is the seventy-seven in the, in the one-eighties. Um and then it sounds like we are, everything else is below that.
And just to clarify, the bus is financed, seventy percent reimbursed.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so just so it's not like we're putting out a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Dollars, yeah.
You're not, you're not.
It would be a, you would, the school budget, if we finance it and we spread it out over a number of years. And we're getting reimbursement over time for that bus, um you would really, would be very low impact on the school budget overall.
Yeah.
And she said, a lot of times they also, um you don't make like a monthly payment, you just say good. Here's a chunk for this year, here's a chunk for this, you'd like, you like, you chunk it out. So it would be like, we made that twenty thousand dollar payment this first year, like that, like this, so you don't necessarily make monthly payments. That's not how it works. And it has to do with the reimbursement from the federal government, so.
Okay. So let's.
I was just gonna say, I'd just like to voice, because it sounds like the committee will choose the size of the bus.
Yeah.
That I prefer, if we're going to be spending this amount of money, I'd go for the one that's does up to forty-eight. With the two plus, I mean, I just wanna.
You mean the.
Put that on there. No, no, because, yeah, because then at least like K and one can go on a field trip together, or four and five are going together, you know. Um, yeah, so that's, that's all, yeah.
Would that one's small enough for the bus trajectory to be from four?
I don't know, we need to talk about that, too. Um and and, you know, maybe we are like also. Looking at, you know, how can we hire, like, how can we help solicit a bus driver? I'm I'm worried about taking it, but to go first.
Cause they are.
I know, I just saw a whole thing about, it was on the Sunday morning thing, about some guy that retired from being a, what was it, a veteran. You know, he was in the military, he's like, well, I decided what is the next important job? He's a bus driver. I'm like, hey, I thought about you.
I was talking about retirement.
I don't need to shut down conversation on the four-day school week. I think there's a lot that needs to be discussed and I want to continue to share it out in community. I just don't want, I think that, you know, we have gone through all of those details with one set of folks at North Wasco. Now we have a new kind of, new set of people, we gotta rework all the details. Um I don't wanna over, like, get too far into the weeds when we don't have all the information. I wanna kind of just focus it on the transportation for tonight, but I'm very happy to make it a regular and recurring topic on our, like, give you guys updates. And Michelle and I are meeting with the committee, um uh and um and then, you know, we can also have additional special meetings just on four-day. If we wanna just really break down, once we have all of the details, I'm like, here's what the schedule's gonna look like, here's what, you know, what do you guys think? We we could do something like that.
And we do, I am keeping it as a standing agenda, I don't just get those, like, three-year updates, but I do think we also should get out here at seven-eight.
Yeah.
So let's keep going, um.
So we need to, what's the price on the four-day first?
It did not have the full, like, breakdown, the way, because when I said, well, what about a bigger, slightly bigger bus? And she said, uh roughly a hundred and eighty. So I think we need to go a little bit above that, just to be. Um in that clear with the eight bells and whistles, that's where we go.
What are you doing with the motion?
Sure, we can have a discussion after, maybe if people would like the number of, I'm making a motion that we uh approve the purchase of a bus up to two hundred thousand dollars.
And what, I can say from tip, all those in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Great, what, what think, too? Right. What's that? What about you on that motion?
Uh, I I feel okay, I feel a little bit not as in front as I'd like to be, um but, you know. Stay in one of the, well, you know, at a.
For, we gotta vote for any opposed, uh, motion passes. Um, thank you. We've got just a second reading of policies for this round. Um Michelle, would you be willing to read off the policies by title?
Uh, sure.
Go for it, Jen.
People, educational opportunity. Section five of war students, compulsory enforcement, student absences and excuses. Truancy, student rights and responsibilities, student conduct. Hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying, teen dating, violence or domestic violence. Use of tobacco products, alcohol, drugs.
Wait, those are not.
I think, I don't think I have that.
No. Those need ones for tomorrow's.
I was like, maybe I.
So we're, yeah.
Um, I have a list, but yeah. All right, glad we caught that. So let's read these one, second, second reading by title, okay?
Second one, board member ethics in conflicts of interest. Two, video surveillance. Three, directory information. Four, personal electronic devices. Five, religion in school. Six, human sexuality, age, HIV, sexually transmitted diseases. And health education. Seven, education records, records of students considering their own management. Policy eight, education records, records of students with disabilities management.
Um, I think ministry, yes, okay.
Uh, number nine, talented and gifted program. Ten, fundraising activity request and verification. Eleven, um AR, fundraising activity request for verification. Twelve, electronic communication system. Thirteen, animals in school facilities. And fourteen, AR animals in school facilities.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of police policies.
In a second? Thank you. We can, all those in favor? Any opposed?
If you know that's staying.
It's sustaining. Okay, um. That's motion still passes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Now, let's see what else. Um, okay, now update. So can anything report out on fundraising?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, really quick before you do that, can I just say out loud, we do have a fundraising, I'm a policy committee meeting tomorrow at noon. If anybody's interested in participating.
Backorder, actual. Um if you don't mind putting up the event calendar, again, just make sure everyone gets eyes on that, but.
Sure. I'm a big running.
The Tigers Den has accumulated about twenty-one thousand dollars um in fundraising from previous years. That we are using for the Playground and Backpack Program. And we right now are raising money for the Jog-a-thon on Thursday. It's looking like we're already at six thousand raised. Which is great, with only fifty-nine kids register of the two hundred, so room to grow. Um and keep doing it, we're gonna be accepting money, of course, for a long time, but if they want the prizes. Um that ends on November seventh. And then um. The one request, I was gonna say, is that we move the uh Read-A-Thon to the month of February. So that we can um get the prizes for the kids at the Scholastic Book Fair, which is gonna be in March.
Any questions?
Great.
Okay.
Work.
Um, anything to report from facility?
No, not really. Everything's just chugging along, like, we discussed the slide, people are just back. We just need a fourteen, and so I reached out again and um I went and I took the slide in the river. Because we were like, okay, we'll just go.
We just want that slide.
And I crawled all around them. And I couldn't find, there's no manufacturer on it, so um I'm gonna call the parking director in the morning and see if they remember. And I'll say I've spent a long time, but maybe they will know somewhere where they got it, hopefully.
I have that.
We can. Um of where I'm from, almost.
Oh.
So I.
Where'd they come from?
Okay.
I know.
Or at least the contact.
Eventually, that's one of our, those first slides are. Eventually, um we are also, you did draw a.
Oh, for parking, yes.
I, I think I have.
Just to like reconfigure the parking lot. Well, we might have to cut two of the spots, it'll depend on the bus, but but still, it's like twenty-five some spaces that are designated. And the garbage would be moved over to this side, it's more sensitive. And we get more parking along this whole road. And then it came up in our emails that um additionally, if we end up getting like power stations for vehicles. It would be better, like, served to put them over here along, along where the garbage is. Nothing else. So excited about it. But yeah, Michelle's got you. You guys can see, but I can also, or Michelle.
Did Vinnie get in touch with you, Michelle, about that tour, that on- in plan?
No, but I'm also thinking, we need that now, we need one for the new music room.
Oh, nodding.
Cause I was like, oh, that's.
You're really wet, but in and out, yeah.
I made a curling and dropped it off and he was forced to call, but. All right.
Hold on, I was just trying to show you really quick. At my back.
Yeah, they kind of. No, no, Sarah Grace. I have to guess which. Okay, so it must be on three already, sorry. I need to memorize what instrument we're using.
That one. Okay, while you're doing that, um, I can report out for the gardening committee, they're raising by first small grant. Not sure if we've got it, it's Oregon, I think it's um like women in agriculture in Oregon, so maybe we'll get some of that if they're doing some, doing something. Um, and then, anything that you guys want to share out for Tigers Den?
No, I was not able to attend, but.
Oh, yeah.
It was great, we're seeing so many new faces. It's awesome, everyone's really excited to get their tires in here, their hats, and everyone's, it's just a, it's a really good vibe, especially knowing that the calendar is all set and everyone knows what to look forward to, so it's going great. Everyone's, um, we are all about more volunteers and growing that.
Great, cool. Okay, there we go.
There you go, I got it. So, this is. So, what is our current, I mean, so, oh, so the container's up here, we have to leave a space to get in it, but moving the garbage over there, we have a huge problem with people parking in front of the garbage and we have very angry garbage people. Like, they're very angry at us. So, anyway, so that would give parking here and here and here and there, um, and then moving the garbage over there. We've actually talked about maybe even thinking about just moving the garbage here.
Okay.
Because then we then, and then leave this, and then that kind of does two things, and maybe lose this space and gain two spaces.
Being here.
Uh, the biggest part is we need to measure everything out and then tell Lisa.
Yeah.
Uh, whether or not a bus can drive up and around without hitting anybody's car.
Well, and Dan had a great idea, if we could have the lot cleared, so like some night or something, um, and no one's in there. If we set out cones, like measure it, and the bus just do it, yeah, see, you know what I mean? A live, like, you know.
Yeah.
See if it, it can make it, but also, we could just send her that, couldn't we? Because there's a scale.
Yeah.
She's able to like.
Like, she's gonna want to know, like, what is.
It's just a draft.
Yeah, yeah, so I think if we gave, I think if we specifically put, like, uh, measurement here, here and here.
Okay. Yeah, I think we might have to lose twenty-one and twenty-two. I just looked up the turning radius specs online for like a large bus and did my best, like, but it might clip twenty-one, twenty-two. So, that's. Or something.
Fourteen and fifteen minutes to get turned into just one.
Right.
I do like the idea of moving the garbage, don't record the container, just because there's neighbors right there.
Yeah, yeah, I think if the garbage was like, i- if we put it here, that, again, we can control who's parking in front of it and put, because right now we're blocking off that and we're blocking off that, so then we're only blocking off one. And then Mitch and Dale can control what.
Could we do the yellow version so that people know when some part.
You're okay? Yeah.
Yes.
But the. And Don is working on getting the city motor to strike for us.
Why can't we just put it in front of the container?
Um, we can, except for, so that then you would, you'd lose all of these parking spots because they have to be able to pull backwards and, because they go back and then they lift it up. So, we have to leave out a big amount of space. But that's. So. Sorry, how many do we currently have in our?
Have not a greater set of. It depends on how people.
Yeah, exactly. I think it's like fourteen designated currently, like this, you know, the ones that are painted and then, you know, it's a free throw. So, at least though this is like, you know, designated and people generally follow parking lines.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think just adding the, like, if we can add some here and even if things have to be moved, I don't know. It just seems like it's gonna get us a few more parking cars. Cool. It's a little crowded out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Teacher that are late don't get a parking spot.
Okay, so, thank you, anything else on facilities?
On the show, is there anything?
Kind of slowing down a little bit. We do have, um, Annie Maslin is running to Monroe because she is kind of like trying to get out of like taking care of it, but she would like one last um input. Uh, she actually said she likes what we're doing.
How good, how good.
I was afraid she was gonna be mad about all of it, but she's not. Anyway.
I had one uh thing that was brought up today in the house, in our house, was if there was a sidewalk, you know where the teachers park along the.
Yeah.
There was a sidewalk on that property line and they could just pull up and drop kids off there rather than having to come down here. It would, I think there would still be enough room for the teachers to park next to the sidewalk, that you'd have a safe place for the kids to walk where they could just drop them off.
We have to talk to the city about that, but, yeah.
Then it may solve some of our congestion issues.
You might stop sidewalks.
Well, they're, they're supposed to have a sidewalk out front here and then that guy, ODOT doesn't have that for it. Oh.
Yeah, that, the safety routes to schools.
Yeah, they don't have that. No money. Okay, we've got five minutes. Um, Jen has something.
Middle School, Vignan Voice Committee, we met last week. Um, it was a great meeting. We came up with, um, made a huge list of different people that everyone knew. We wanted to do either a career week at the middle school and have various different people come in and have that be like the concentration of that week for kids. Have them kind of pick a career to investigate a little bit more about, but we really want to try to get um, as many different people and jobs represented. Um, Dan, I'd love if we could be one of those.
Sure.
And any of you. Um, yeah, we have a great list of, um, and oh, and then we're also planning our ski, skiing, so we're sledding trip again. Um, that that was on the list, yeah, but, so we made a huge list of various different people who could come in um, and and talk to the kids, various different careers. The one thing that um we really like to try to get is some kids, some adults who represent our Latino kids' careers, you know, that that look like it, so that, you know, there's more of a connection with it. But we're really excited, we were thinking more towards the end of the, the year doing it, when kids are kind of checked out now and directly like in May, we just kind of dedicated them, we've been having some people, speakers coming. So, yeah, we're really excited about that. I think that was it, yeah, that was like our big conversation was that.
I think. Cool, it's great. And are you all meeting kind of frequently or?
Once a month, yeah. And unfortunately, many of the parents forgot, they're like, we were here last week.
Okay, and then anything else um on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh schedule? I already talked about that a lot.
Oh, well, no, we have our meeting is the thirtieth. Um, just one more facilities thing is, and kind of Tigers Den because they had money to go towards the stage. They had footage to that, and so, um, we are buying a projector that's gonna go up in the ceiling in a very big range. That will shine down in a new screen. Um, and then, uh, Nathan has been working, she now has Bluetooth, so we're super excited about that. They can connect, of course, we are a little worried about that as well, that anybody can connect, because we want to find out who has their phone on them. So, um, I heard Savannah say yesterday that it was a life changer for her to drop off because she can play music and stuff and and do that. Uh, we did also order a couple of, they're mic, what do you call them? There's some sort of microphone, so instead of having those mics where they're on here, it will actually pick up kids in, on the stage talking. So, when they're singing Willy Wonka or saying lines, we'll be able to actually hear them.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, no more buzzing.
Yeah, no more buzzing, so Nate's really working on, and I think once the uh we move uh the music room over there, the plan is to move all the audio into the room that we currently have some food storage in, and so it will be up off the stage, which will be really wonderful, so very, very exciting. Like, Nathan's doing a fabulous job on that, Savannah's, we're excited about it, so. And it's, I mean, and it's also like, Willy Wonka is the twelfth and thirteenth, I don't think that, I don't know if that's on our schedule.
Oh, I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's uh December.
December twelfth and thirteenth. And it would be nice to, I have to talk to Tigers Den about this, is actually to shake down some, because we didn't collect any money last year. I think we should be collecting money. For a penny? Yeah.
It's a donation.
A donation to have people like, you know, and maybe a suggestive donation or something, so.
Just a glass box at the entry.
Yeah.
And exit.
Yeah. That's why I wanted to.
Cool.
So, it's ordered, it is ordered and it will be installed probably as soon as they get it.
We could do a fundraiser of selling the box too.
Still like selling little like single phone. People in the back of the corner. Yeah.
Yeah. Chip, did you have one more thing?
No, I was just gonna move to a church meeting, so.
That's right on time. Say it all in favor.